Okay, I'm calling to order the special meeting of the Euclid Board of Education, and today is Monday, March 26th. We are meeting at the Forteis Building. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Here.
Mrs. Lysick.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Suter.
Here.
Mrs. Van Hoel.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. This evening, we are going to hear a presentation about Title I programming, and I will turn this over to Dr. Jones at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Hoel. As the board is aware, we've had a meeting, this presentation scheduled for a prior meeting, and we pulled it back because we felt it needed more vetting publicly. And then, we had it erroneously on our last, on our last board meeting agenda. And we are now making this presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Schweitzer, who will introduce Mr. Lysick.
Thank you, Dr. Jones, board, and our guests. Welcome. I have kind of our, my original introduction, but before the original introduction, since time's gone by over the last few weeks, I wanted to take a second and explain some of the things that happened since the original date, which I think was four weeks ago now, when we were going to make this. It actually afforded us the opportunity to have several more meetings, in which we gathered some input, tried to answer some questions, and actually did end up making some changes to the plan. And thus, you know, some of the things you'll see today are revisions from what you would have seen four weeks ago. Those meetings included a meeting where all the principals were together. I then met with each principal individually of the four principals, our four principals for next year, in their building. Ted held a coaches' meeting. We had three general meetings for anybody that wanted to come in the boardroom here after school on three different days. And I personally, and I know Mr. Lysick did too, advanced an invitation to anyone who wanted to meet one-on-one with either me or Ted or both certainly would be afforded that opportunity if they wanted to. Like I said, as a result, some changes were made, which you will see in the presentation. Reasons to change the model, as I see it, really stems from just an actual genuine need. You will see in the presentation that in spite of our best efforts, and in spite of everybody involved working extremely hard on a difficult task, we simply are not closing the gap between Euclid and national reading norms. We have shown growth, we have moved in the right direction, but in no way have we narrowed that gap. Research obviously shows, we've heard this a million times, that the greatest impact on our students happens in the classroom. We need to address all students by providing high-quality, targeted professional development, which I truly believe our coaches can provide. And I mean provide to all through a centralized coaching model aimed at improving the reading instruction of all of our classroom teachers, while at the same time providing support to those students most at need with an increased number of interventionists. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Ted, who will go through the presentation. Tom Hanicek is also here tonight, the Academic Services Department, to answer any questions. We have some statistics and some graphs in the presentation, and we thought Tom might be helpful if he had any questions regarding those. Ted?
Good evening, board and audience members. We are here to talk about new requirements and a new model for how we are using our Title dollars in the district. I want to start off by saying that this is, this is not, by any means should this be perceived as a solution to our, the data gap that we'll present today. But it is one strategy and a number of strategies that Academic Services is trying to put in place this year to support the classroom teacher. So, that is what we're working towards. So, our current delivery model, you may be very familiar with this, our coaching support is voluntary. If a teacher would like to work with a coach, all coaches are very willing participants, very, very knowledgeable about, about reading and mathematics. But the professional development, development is not systemic, so not every teacher receives this model. Reading recovery right now is, is one intervention that we do offer students. It's a one-on-one, and it's really inadequate for the number of students that we need to service. We do have leveled literacy that we're using, LLI is an intervention, where we are able to service groups of three students in, we service more students in LLI than we do in reading recovery. More on our current model, we feel that it's really moved us forward, but it's moved us forward unevenly, and that's due in part to the voluntary nature of it. But it has provided us with one thing that we really want to take from this model, and that's the job-embedded component, the training taking place in the classroom, support being there in the classroom for the teachers is one thing that we've realized some success in. Our greatest impact really lies with those classroom teachers, and we need to give teachers more opportunities to learn from one another. So, another component that our current model has provided in moving us forward over the last, last few years is it's provided a common language and some protocols, for example, pacing guides in ELA and mathematics. It's also provided us a framework for looking at data through the five-step process and common formative assessment. So, there are some things that we've, we've taken from this current delivery model that we, we don't want to let go. But in looking at what's coming down the road, we do not believe that this model is sufficient to respond to these new requirements. These new requirements up here on the screen are some biggies. They are ones that you obviously, I'm sure, have heard of. We have the Common Core state standards in English, Language Arts, and Math, and it is expected that those will be implemented during the 2013-2014 school year. So, a lot of professional development needs to be, be focused on those, the new content, not only in what we teach, but in how we're teaching those, those new standards. That is in direct correlation to these new assessments that are coming in 2014. They will be computer-based, and the rigor will be increasing tremendously with these new assessments. We also have revised academic content standards in the areas of Science and Social Studies. We are constructing, as a, as a component of our corrective action plan from the audit last year, a response to intervention model that will be looking at serving, best serving the needs of all students, making sure no students fall behind. And then, we've also, right now, will need to provide title support to both of our middle schools. So, we'll be expanding our services from K-5 to K-8. In, in looking at, at some data to, to construct this proposal, we, we went out and we, we did some information gathering with some guidance from our state support team. We also looked at other first-ring districts that were utilizing Title funds, and we, we want to make it very clear that we weren't going out and trying to replicate a model. But we looked at districts that were experiencing some successes, and we talked with individuals from those buildings, and we visited those districts, and we pulled specific components from different districts that we felt would, would really fit in Euclid. And again, we pulled a lot of the things that we felt we were doing well, and, and pulled them all together into a cohesive plan. As Mr. Schweitzer mentioned, we also met with our, our elementary principals and our elementary teachers, and, and received some feedback from them about, you know, what, what types of things are working. And then, we started to look at some data. This first slide, we're going to start by looking at our oral reading fluency data. And we're going to, we started administering this in the winter of first grade. So, you can see here, I know it's really ironic here that, because we're looking at last year's data and 2011's data, student score, describes a little difficult to read here, 35 words per minute. Identical scores in the winter of 2010 and 2011. And you can see here that nationally, which is the blue bar, if you have kiddos at home, you know, there's that, I call it the light bulb that goes off. In the middle of first grade, right around the middle of first grade, you start to see kids, they, what I like to call, crack the code. And they start to be able to take the sounds and put them together to create words, the words create sentences, and you see a spike. That's reflected nationally in the data, you see a spike in the words per minute that these kiddos can, can read at the middle of first grade. In Euclid, as you can see here, we, we make progress. You know, we've got that upward trend. But you can see that that gap starts to widen. As you move to second grade, the gap is still present, and at the end of the year, you're looking at a gap of about 15 words per minute. Move up to grade three, the gap continues to grow. Grade four, by the end of the fourth grade year, you're looking at about a 30-word-per-minute And that's reflected again in grade five. So, again, the important thing to take from these graphs is that Euclid students are making progress. They are growing. They're not growing at a rate that will close that gap. As you pull the gap components together, and you look at students in grade one, and this is based on the 2010-2011 data, because that was the last year where we have a winter and an end-of-the-year data point, we have a gap of 12 words per minute in first grade in the winter, that grows to 17 by the end of the year. In grade two, we actually maintain, as you move up the grade levels, what you'll see is that not only does that gap grow as you go from first grade to second grade to third grade to fourth grade and fifth grade, but it also grows and it widens throughout the course of the year. So, between winter and spring, the gap grows as well within a grade. This is our window of opportunity, we feel, making a decision that, that is this substantial. There, there's really never going to be a good time to make this decision or make a change like this, but we feel that there's never going to be a better time to do it than now. With all of the requirements ahead of us, with the Common Core and the new assessments, every year that we wait, we believe that will be a year, it will, it will be a year of catching up and trying to implement this new content and these new, these new standards. So, we really feel that even though we're moving into these new buildings, this is really a window of opportunity for us to capture the essence of, of building new relationships with teachers in buildings, increasing support to meet the needs of students, and implementing a new professional development model that really focuses on that classroom teacher in a systemic way. So, as you look at what our purpose was here, the word systemic really keeps popping out, and that's the idea that what we do in this model is, is very different because we feel that it, it systemically, everyone is involved. You know, when we do the training, it's not an opt-in to the training, everyone will be, will be involved in that support, from tutors to teachers, and we even see it as systemically supporting more students to achieve. So, the components, one of the largest changes is, is centralizing our coaches. We do want to point out that, that we are very committed to a 70-30 model. What we mean by a 70-30 model is that 70% of the time, these coaches, even though they will be centrally located here at the board office, will be out at the buildings. We've shared with the coaches, math and reading, to give them an idea of what this model would look like. If the coaches will be here at Forteis, they'll be doing one of two things, planning professional development or delivering professional development. If they're not doing one of those two things, they'll be supporting the teachers in the classrooms at the building level. Each coach would be assigned to a building and work to support that building. We really feel that these cohorts will allow, allow us to do a strategic focus by focusing on grade bands and pulling out these cohorts of, of teachers to work together. It is systemic PD, which does allow us to meet the state standards for professional development, all of the components, meaning that it's informed by data, it's ongoing, and it's collaborative. It's no longer a teacher learning from a coach, but it would be a coach facilitating a group of teachers, really leveraging the expertise within the group to learn from one another, and really build that capacity by, by learning as a team. And we really feel, we believe that that's sustainable. And again, we want to continue to support that job-embedded training component. We feel that's really, really important. Taking the professional development to the classroom level, the support at the classroom level, is something that, that we, we really pulled from when we looked at our current model and compared it to other models in the area. It's, it's what the other districts have said, boy, you know, I wish we were able to do that. And we are, we're able to do that and continue to do that with this proposed model. One of the biggest changes from, from the, the plan as it stands, or the proposal as it stands today, and where it was four weeks ago, is this transition year. You know, we really heard that we, we, as, as a, as a system, we weren't ready to take that large of a leap. You know, we, it was the right direction to go, but provide some system, some systems and to, to transition, so it wasn't just a baptism by fire, so to speak. So, we built in a transition year, and then we'll, we'll look at that right here. What you'll see on the left are the current positions that are funded through Title dollars, and our current year is, is where we're at right now. We have two coordinators, nine coaches, two instructional assistants, three full-time tutors, 13 part-time tutors, four-and-a-half reading recovery teachers, no administrators, and one secretary who's paid a supplemental to help administer the Title I budget and requirements. What we're proposing next year, this would be that transition year that we talked about, would be going down, keeping the same ratio of coaches. So, one reading coach assigned to each building, and one math coach for every two buildings, which is what we currently have. We feel that that would allow us to transition and, and support our teachers in our, our collaborations, our five-step process, still support our professional development. We would increase our instructional assistance and target those early grades. Our tutors, you can see we have a, you know, increase in the number of tutors from three to eight full-time tutors, and from 13 to 26 part-time tutors to deliver intervention for kids. This comes at, at the cost of the elimination of the reading recovery, and an addition of one administrator who would oversee all of the Title I program. We would keep that secretary in place, it's, we intend on keeping that one, that individual in place next year, continue to pay that supplemental as a transition to train that administrator in all of the, the intricacies of, of Title I, of the budgeting and administration of the grant. And we, we do intend on examining that at the end of next year to see if we've, we've been able, have we built the capacity with that administrator to be able to, to pull that away for the following year. In 2013, really the only change, you know, would be transitioning out that, those coaches to go to two reading and two math, again, keeping with the centralized model, the same thing as we would have for next year, but assigning the, relinquishing some of that responsibility to the classroom teachers after a transition year. So, that's the model. Again, the, we don't want this to be viewed as a silver bullet, something that's going to fix and close that gap immediately. What we do know is that the research shows that the most important thing that we can do to impact student achievement is what happens in the classroom. And if we can build the capacity and support our teachers in a way that will, that will give us, you know, the most solid classroom instruction that we can have, you know, we firmly believe that this, this plan will move us forward and close those gaps.
I'd like to add here that the change you see in the coaches from the ninth, it's keeping the same ratio we have now, but going from six buildings to four, really was a result of, you know, some of the meetings that were held in, in the last four weeks. When I went, when we had an original, our first principals' meeting, the question, as Ted mentioned before, that really rose to the top was, are we ready to do this? Is the bird ready to fly from the neck? I mean, can, you know, as we start next year, there's so many things happening with opening a new building and new staffs and this, that, and the other thing. So, as I went to each of the four principals, it, it became clear to me that there was a much greater comfort level if they knew that they would have a reading coach per building, that we would be starting next year, and they would have somebody assigned to their building that would help get things off the ground and so on and so forth, rather than going to a totally centralized model, you know, right away. So, you know, that was the, really the impetus, and the reason behind the change is that it became clear, and then we kind of did the aha moment too, where, yeah, there is, there is a lot on the principals' plates at this fall. When those things are going to open, we're going to have a whole new teacher evaluation system, there's going to be the, the principal evaluation system that they're going to be under, and they just wanted really to have that assurance that they would have a coach that would be with them in, in their building for that year. And thus, the whole idea of a transition year from current model to the model we hope to get to was born. So, I just want to make that, you know, clear as that has to the reason. Sorry.
No, that's, that's actually a great way to end it here, John.
For the board, would you please describe the differences between coach, instructional assistant, and tutor?
Yes, the, the instructional assistants will be, and I'm going to look to Dr. Selico because she has the exact terminology here, but a pair of professionals that will be working in the classroom, supporting small-group guided reading, small-group math work. The, the tutors, full-time and part-time, will be doing more intervention work with students outside of the classroom or in the classroom interventions.
And what would their professional status be, tutors? Would they be certified teachers?
Yes, highly qualified.
Good. Okay.
Full-time and part-time?
Yes.
Okay. This time, does board have any questions?
Ah, yes.
Okay.
The first one, the budget reduction going from $1,880,000 to $1,300,000. Is that because our federal Title I dollars are being cut, or we're going to redistribute that $500,000 another way, or?
That's a great question, Mr. Smith. The, the reduction is actually, we, we look at it as a balance that we have remaining, that we intend on supporting those, if you remember, the upcoming challenges, the professional development cohorts that we'll be putting together. Portions of that balance will be reallocated to pay for subs to cover the cost of bringing teachers in to do cohort professional development. It also accounts for programs that we can put in place to support tiered interventions at our middle schools. So, we still have to, one thing that's not addressed in this table is that support for middle school programming and middle school support. So, that balance of, you know, the 1.82, 1.82 to 1.510 will be used to, to support that middle school component as well.
And, and to pay for professional development subs and so on and so forth. It, I think the crux of your question was, it's a, it's a reallocation of resources, and I think that's kind of what you were getting at. We will be able to provide more tutors, we'll be able to provide some pro, program, no, pro, program, thank you, changes at really the result of the reading recovery teacher salaries and lowering the number of coaches. That's what gives us the money to do the other stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that was my first question, and depending on how you answered it, it was going to, you know, kind of lead to the other questions, because I mean, and I think you've sort of touched on it, because one of the other things I was going to ask is, well, if you're expanding service to the middle schools, you know, where are those coaches per building in that respect? Because, I mean, if we're going from nine to six to four, with four reading and two math next year, is that how I understand it?
Yes, yes.
And, but those, I didn't know if, I mean, because initially, when I see six, I'm like, okay, well, there's all six buildings that, you know, you've got the four new elementary schools and the two middle schools. So, some of that, so is the, why are we expanding Title I to the middle schools? Is that a, to respond to state new?
Federal requirement based on poverty levels.
Okay. And we provide, we have to expand service, but we don't receive additional federal dollars? That's one of the challenges.
And what is that level? Is it 70%?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent.
So, if your building has 75%, free and reduced, then you get, or you, the building now has to have Title I services?
But I thought Title I services, doesn't it work like you can do a school? Isn't there like a school-based Title I service or a district-wide Title I? How does that work?
There's a targeted and a school-wide.
Targeted, okay. And we're going to be doing district-wide?
Our intent is to do school-wide.
School-wide, right, or district-wide, right. And we can't get additional dollars for that?
No. Every, every call that we've made to Columbus, and we were just actually, quite a few of us were down in Columbus last week at the Title Conference, and there is no additional funding that comes with the expansion of services.
Okay. Even with the addition of two new schools?
Even with the addition of two new schools.
Wow.
That's government financing.
Yeah, but we're at the federal level. Does Congress, they said, does it take an act of Congress to do that? Can't, you know, I mean, we have a rather education, pro-educational president, I'm surprised that we can't have something done. I know, that's, I'm just spewing, there's nothing that you can answer there, so.
I think part of Kent's question before also, when you automatically think six schools and there's the six tutors, keep in mind that the middle schools are organized differently. We have departments, teams, department heads, and so on, so there's already some built-in supports there. So, that's where program changes are, are being investigated.
Yeah, one, one thing, Mr. Smith, that we're, one thing that we can leverage at the middle school and in high school for that matter is, is the department chair. At the elementary, every elementary teacher is a reading teacher, and every elementary teacher is a math teacher. When you get to the middle school and it's departmentalized, that allows expertise, yeah, much smaller groups of individuals to work with.
Since you have this slide up, if, since we're reducing the number of coaches, will some of those coaches be considered for the tutors' positions, or will that be available for them, especially since we want highly qualified tutors?
They'll definitely be available for them.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we have that agreement.
Very. And you've met with, have you met with some of the, well, you say you have an agreement, so I'm assuming you've met with some of the coaches and have made that an offer?
Actually, if I may, the, the coaches, through our bidding process, they have rights to go back into classrooms. The positions, what we've agreed to is, what Mr. Schweitzer's referring to, is that if any layoffs that result, that happen as a result of this model, those teachers who are laid off will have first dibs at the tutoring positions, at the school improvement, tutor full-time position.
Yeah, I guess that was, yeah. Well, that was sort of my question, but I didn't know how to ask it. You answered it perfectly, thank you. And then, so we're going from two coordinators to one administrator. Do you think one administrator could handle the job that two coordinators used to, used to handle, especially since we're adding two middle schools?
That's, that's the pretty common model, to have, that districts have a Title I coordinator, so to speak, and they work directly with all the people that are receiving, that are hired basically through Title funds. They oversee them, they help set the direction, in this case, the whole Academic Services Department, and the district will be sent, setting the course. But it, it provides one person as kind of the oversight person, and eventually, that same person hopefully will also be picking up all the financial end as well.
Now, could possibly one of the coordinators move into that administrator position since there's a carryover of knowledge? Or is that why you're keeping, there, you were saying something about maybe not eliminating that secretarial position right away because there would be a consensus of knowledge that would be carried through to the new program?
My assumption would be if that position is My assumption would be if that position is created, that anyone qualified certainly can.
But apply.
Apply, and, yeah.
The coordinators are, are part-time coordinators.
Okay, so this would be a full-time administrator then?
Yes.
And all, and that would be paid out of title funds, even with the administrator paid totally out of title funds, you can see that there's still substantial savings over the way we do it now.
Okay.
How many students do we serve in reading recovery right now in a year's time?
We, we do not have that data right now, but we can get that for you. We're looking at pulling that data together.
Something might have it.
Just to clarify, the reading recovery teachers are reading recovery slash LLI teachers, and so at the end of the year, they service, each one of them services eight reading recovery students, and they also service between, anywhere between 12 to 32, closer to 32, LLI students. So really, at the end of the year, a reading recovery teacher could service anywhere between 30 and 40 students, a classroom full of children.
And how many reading recovery teacher, staff members do we have?
Currently, we have four and a half.
Is there any other question? Did you have more?
Yeah. The, the graphs that we look at, first grade through fifth grade, not that you need to bring them up, but I guess my question is, the student demographic makeup of the federal line, which is to say, are we looking at Title I students on the federal side? Because obviously, we understand that, you know, that, I mean, one of the challenges we have is when we're matched up with state data that doesn't tell the stories, that doesn't, that isn't a fair apples-to-apples comparison, because we have a higher, yeah, let me just keep going with the question, but feel free and rotate. You know, we have more special ed kids in Euclid than the state average, we have a higher poverty level than the state average, so one of the ways that Euclid always gets hit in these student-by-student comparisons, when we're dealing with Columbus, is the notion that we have more of a, you know, we have more cognitive needs amongst our students for a variety of reasons. So I guess my question would be, what's the makeup of the federal line?
When we look at these graphs, what we're looking at is a national norm, very large sample of hundreds of thousands of students all over the country, so that's, that's a national norm, mean score, and then there's ours. So it's all students.
Can I follow up on that question?
Yeah.
So when we went to the first ring districts and we looked at the ones that were producing positive results, which schools in particular did we look at to model their Title I programming to fit in with our new model?
Two in particular. We looked at Parma City Schools and South Euclid-Linhurst.
Okay. And I can see South Euclid-Linhurst, because their poverty minority levels are about similar to ours. Why Parma's?
We, we, actually, we looked at Parma, Mrs. Lize, more so for their professional development and how they were offering their professional development model, not as much how they were offering intervention services.
Right, because if we're not offering services that aren't similar to our particular group of students, then we're never going to reach that national.
It's a great point.
Yeah, we, we looked at how they were centralizing coaches and through, you know, providing professional development to cohorts of teachers and taking that back. That, that's just the model, it's not apples-to-apples for students. It was, look at a structure, not how to do something.
Okay, so, and then our goals, do we have, like, certain metrics in place to see if we're going to be meeting our goals in that first year, or, I mean, how are we going to look at how we're going, how are we marking our improvement or measuring our improvement?
Well, I mean, this data, this data, for example, is one example of, we take benchmark result, we monitor students, all students, three times a year with these benchmarks. We also monitor the students receiving intervention on a weekly basis, so we can actually look at subgroups and look at their growth at any point of the year.
So we're, so we'll do what we've done to monitor student improvement, we're just going to implement a different program?
All right, let me get back to my line, then. No, no, no. So the AMES data, I, I don't think anybody here questions AMES data as being, you know, preeminent and, you know, very well-respected. But again, is that, when you said that's all federal students, if I'm understanding you correctly, then that's not all federal Title I students? You understand what I'm saying? Because again, we've got, I mean, if we've got a 75% poverty line.
Well, when we, when we look at the national norm, it's such a large number, it's a large sample size that we can account for, I mean, having such a large norm group, it's, it's a great sample to compare the national norm and where kids nationally are, and it includes all groups. We have, I mean, with the national pool, we have districts that are very similar to ours and districts that aren't, and when you have that large sample, we're able to look at that as, as a quality national norm reference.
Well, what percentage of schools in the nation take Title I funding? Do we know that number?
I do not.
What's the percentage of schools in the nation that receive Title I funding? Because, I mean, if we know that percentage, then we might be able to, you know, if the number's like 80%, 90%, then that would be, then that might be, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I didn't mean to cut you off. I thought you were done.
No, I'm not.
You want to keep going?
Yeah, may I?
Go.
Thank you, okay. So my point is, is that this may not be a fair comparison, because if you look at the national average, some of the students in poverty might be diluted, where we're looking at our district that has such a high poverty level, 75%. And so this is not a fair comparison, so it might be difficult to rate, I mean, that gap is obviously going to get bigger. I mean, we're making strides, but I think what we need to do is maybe look at all the Title I districts in the nation and compare their data to ours.
My point is.
When, when, when I look at this, I see that national mean score as, as being reflective of high probability of passing, or I have achievement assessment. The closer we are to that national mean, the greater the probability that our students will pass their, their achievement assessments. And Ohio and a number of other states have shown that correlation. So to close the gap gets us closer regardless of our student population. That's, that's a known.
Yeah, because the result, the result is achievement.
Yeah.
We're trying to achieve, we want to be.
That's where we need them to get.
Yes, exactly, and there's no comparison other than the fact that we want them to achieve.
And again, I think.
Well, absolutely.
As, as everyone else in this country achieves, so.
Right, and I, I don't think any of us are speeding that again.
Whether you're in poverty or, you know.
Well, the.
I believe what you're getting at is the challenges are different.
Five percent of the population of this country, it doesn't matter. We need to achieve, and this may be the ends to the means, so.
What I led off with in asking about the line was, who's in that line? Is that all of the nation's kids, or is that a Title I nationwide sample? And again, that was my only, you know, I want to know where we were.
Our kids are in that line.
That's actually very, our kids are.
Well, I understand that our kids are in that line, but again, there's nothing, there's no, you know, code on that graph that tells me what kids I'm looking at, which is again.
All national kids and all our kids.
No, it's not all national kids. It's all kids who are assessed using AMES.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. One, one thing we do know is that within, within that, within that sample size that creates that national norm, there are many challenges that all districts are faced with, mobility, high poverty, socioeconomic status, lots of different things. That national norm is representative of districts that face the same challenges. How, how close it ties to our district, you know, we don't have the exact answer to. Like Mr. Schweitzer said, if you look at the data and you follow it through, it's not that, it's not that we're on par with the national, when we get them, it's not that we're, you know, the kiddos that are in our schools are growing, not only are they not growing at the rate, the gap is widening.
Right.
And, and we, and this is our effort to, to put supports in place that will stop that gap from widening, and we're hoping narrowing that gap.
Right, and, and I understand that. I think you and I both want to agree.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we all understand that, but everything that we've seen ties achievement to poverty, or lack of achievement to poverty. And so, you know, my point is in that we aren't, we should always do what we possibly can to narrow the achievement gap. And I'm not saying that poor students can't do that, they absolutely can't, but we've, you know, we've listened to Diane Ravitch, I believe is her last name, and we look at countries all over the world where academic success is directly linked to their level of poverty or their lack of socioeconomic status. And so, you know, maybe as a nation, we need to maybe help our teachers out by doing something else in terms of narrowing the poverty gap in our nation, and maybe that might help us narrow the achievement gap in our nation, too. So I'm just, that's the only point that I'm making, that as long as we have poor kids and we're not doing anything to help the socioeconomic status of our community and of our nation, I don't ever see that line ever narrowing, because everything statistically says that if you're at a certain poverty level, there is always going to be a cap on your achievement.
Well, that being said, I think Mr. Schweitzer's first point about what we can do is in happening in our classrooms.
I, I think, you know, respectfully, I think it can narrow. Whether it completely closes or not, it may be a little different story at this point. But I, I, I think that, think supports can be put in place that you attempt to at least narrow that gap.
How long is, how long have we had Title I? Since 1965, is that correct? The beginnings, the precursor to Title I happened in 1965?
Chapter one.
Am I correct?
Yes.
And we've been, and so obviously, we know that we have not improved that since 1965. That's my only point that I'm making, is that continually, over decades and decades and decades, we still continue to see poverty is directly tied to achievement.
It's a high correlation, for sure.
Yeah.
So I mean.
I have a little question. First of all, the current model that we're working under right now with the Title I and the reading recovery and the LLI's, how long has, we've been doing that program? With this method, this current method? With the coaches and pulling them out and?
We, boy, it's, it's a great question. We've actually had coaches for seven years altogether, but we, it's, the model has changed over the years, from a reduction in coaches.
I think it's five.
Five years, I'm sorry, five years.
Okay. And then my other question has to deal with instructional assistants. Currently, you said, you're telling me you have two, we go to eight the next two years, and those are non-teachers, correct? They don't have a teaching license, they're just?
They're professionals.
Okay. And then you have the tutors that are full-time, that are, you said are highly qualified with a teacher's license, right? But now, when you have these other tutors, well, there's 26 of them, and now, I assume they're part-time. Are these, like, I know right now, are some of these tutors are retired teachers coming back? Do we have a load of teachers who are coming back as retirees, or people who are still trying to get into the workforce and are willing to take a part-time job?
It's an excellent question.
Because if you're willing to take a part-time job now, it's only a matter of when you're going to walk out and leave us.
Yeah. It's an excellent question, and the answer is yes. Yes to both. Yes, we do have some retired teachers who really enjoy working with kids and do not want to work full-time, so come back and work part-time. We have teachers doing that in our buildings currently. We also have the other end of the spectrum, where we have teachers who may not have been able to get full-time jobs, or may be a parent who does not want to commit to a full-time job, but wants to supplement their income with part-time work, or another young teacher who's looking to get their foot in the door in a district, and that's a great opportunity. So those are really the two, the two realms of, of individuals that we're targeting.
Now, the tutors and the full-time tutors and the, both of those groups, are they in the union and they part of the same bargaining as a regular teacher?
That's part of the agreement that we have.
So even the part-timers would be paying into the union dues and having the same union benefit? No, not the part-timers. The full-time school improvement tutors would be paid hourly, as hourly tutors, would be part of the ETA, there's a, there's a section in the ETA agreement for tutors. The part-time people are not.
Right.
And that's the 26, the 13.
Then they work no more than 15 hours a week.
I'm sorry, I thought you were speaking just the full.
No, I'm just trying to go through the whole, yeah, the whole thing here, okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just one more question I have. Because I have a couple of subs, too, so I just. Are we doing, do we have any money set aside for parental and community involvement programs?
Yes.
Okay. And what are those?
There's a set aside, you have to set aside a certain percentage of money.
What's in that budget?
For parents and community.
1%. And so what do we do with that money?
That's, there are a couple of things we do to it, and one is, that, that 1% can get sent to the buildings, for the buildings to decide how they're going to involve parents, get parents into the building, to talk, to promote programming that's there for, for individuals. The district can use a portion of that 1%, a very small portion of the 1% to communicate with parents, to hold a meeting, to inform parents of, of the services that we offer.
You know, I think maybe we should look into spending that 1% in a program, because I think all of these programs would be much, I think this new implement of program would be much more successful if we had maybe parental involvement, some support at home to help their children. I mean, I just think that, you know, if we're not seeing that, the gap narrowing as much as we want, maybe we need to start involving our parents and community members, and if we had 1% of the budget to do so, let's use that money to do so, to help support this program, because I think it'd be much more successful if we have that.
Currently, Mrs. Lize, the, the building principals get to determine how they use that money. They get a portion of it, but I, I like what your idea.
Have we used it in the past? Has that money been used?
We use it, yeah. And it varies from building to building on how they choose to use it.
Can I make a correction to what was stated before? Not everybody may be necessarily privy to this. In the agreement, the memorandum of understanding with the ETA, part-time, highly qualified tutors and teachers licenses would also become union members at a, at a reduced union rate.
Are there any of them that are part-time that would not be licensed teachers?
No, they shouldn't be.
So they all would then be union members? Go ahead. Mr. Smith, I know you have more questions.
Do you have more?
Last question, I promise. And so in devising this plan, you did mention that you had, you had how many meetings with teachers or open meetings? Did you end up having some meetings with teachers and coaches?
We put out email slams and, I can't remember the dates, last one was just this past Wednesday, two days, a week ago tonight, this past Wednesday, and one about two weeks ago.
We had a total of three meetings.
That's good, and how were, were they attended? Were they well-attended?
I think we had, we had between eight and 15 teachers at each.
That's not bad. And what time was that meeting again?
It was after school, that's why we held them on a couple of different nights, because some had staff meetings on Monday, and we held another one Wednesday.
Four o'clock until, I think, some of the meetings went until 6:00, 6:30.
So teachers were able to get to these meetings after school and?
Yes.
Okay.
And I personally was not able to stay late for our last one, so I announced at the beginning of it, did anybody want to leave the team a little longer?
Yeah, I think that was a great idea, because.
Any, any time.
Because I really think that we need the input, we need teacher buy-in, and you're right, we are transitioning into a brand-new situation for a lot of these principals, and I think the more input we get, the easier that transition's going to be. And I'm finished.
I have a real quick question about the parent piece of this. When you, when you serve people reading recovery, I know there's a parental, kind of a buy-in to the program, and what about the LLI? The parents are communicated with and?
I can speak to that. Both in reading recovery and LLI, there is a heavy parent component. Books, small books are sent home with a parent's sign-up sheet, so that we communicate on a nightly basis in both programs. There's also word cards that go home, as well as a sentence that they've, they've written with their teacher. In addition to that, our reading recovery and LLI teachers often invite parents to come in and watch lessons. So, you know, there's just a lot of communication there with our trained reading recovery LLI teachers.
Well, I'm making assumption that that will continue, so that.
We're continuing. Yes, we are continuing LLI. Absolutely.
And so that would help us with the parental component to this whole process, huh?
Mr. Smith?
Now, with the, with the Title I money, I noticed that some of the schools have after-school tutoring, some of the schools have lunchtime tutoring. That's part of the programs that are offered, that 1%? Or is that another part of it?
No, that's another part of it.
Okay, another part of it there?
That's the programs.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
All right. So my only questions thus far have only been informational, is just so I could better understand the presentation, which was like the, you know, the, regarding on the staffing side, going from six to four and. side, going from six to four, and whether or not the six included the six buildings, the four elementary school, and the two middle school. And you clarified that. And then I asked about the line, and just what the makeup was of the federal line, and you've clarified that. And, I mean, I do understand that the, the point of the AIMS data comparing our students to the national norms is to demonstrate that the gap coming into the first grade was 35 to 47, and the gap leaving the fifth grade was 122 to 152, and just that your point was in using the data that the gap had widened, that while our kids had made some improvement, that when compared to the national norms, the gap had widened. I get that. And it's good to know, for the benefit of those watching at home, that, that this is not an apples-to-apples comparison, because the level of poverty is probably, is, I would confidently say, is higher in the Euclid demographic. And it's good that we're still, obviously, showing some consistent improvement in every grade level. So my question now becomes, if you've looked at Parma and South Euclid as your best practices, first-string suburbs, and the Parma piece of it was just kind of the delivery of services, as I understand it, do we have any AIMS data from South Euclid that they're using this approach, that they've been able to narrow the gap over, you know, a period of time at a quicker rate than we're narrowing the gap?
No, we do not have that.
So, I mean, I'm, I understand that the state, the state corps, you know, that, I understand that the state continues to change the academic standards by which public schools are measured by. I get that. I've been on the board long enough that I've seen them, you know, change how they're doing it a few times. And they're doing it again. And I understand that this, this model is being rolled out in part to, due to the anticipation of how the state's going to change again, and the fact that we're picking up two new schools, being the middle schools, that we have to service with our Title I dollars. But I'm a little concerned if we haven't found best practices anywhere, and so I want to hear that, if we haven't found best practices that would suggest that this particular new model is going to help us close the gap a little quicker.
Great point, Mr. Smith, and well-taken. What I will say is that some of the best practices that we have taken in our search, our information gathering, are right here when it comes to seeing improvement with students. We talked about one of the shortcomings of our current model, being that it's not systemic. So where the things that are working in our district to see those gains are here. Where we're falling short is that systemic approach to making sure that every teacher receives that, that model of professional development to shore up the core instruction for all teachers in the district, if that makes sense. So as we went out and looked at other first-string districts, not necessarily programming, there's really not a ton of programmatic changes as far as the materials that we're using, or, you know, the types of programs that we're, we're not cutting a program and inserting another program. It really is looking at this, a reallocation of resources to make sure that we can provide a more systemic approach for all of our teachers in the district, not just to move our lowest-achieving kiddos, but to really service the masses of our kids that we have in need in our district. And that starts, in our belief, in the, with the regular classroom teacher, and really making that the point of entry for, you know, that the best instruction that a kiddo will get will be in every teacher that we have in this district. Does that, does that help answer your question?
It's, I'll, I guess I'll admit that it wasn't the answer I was looking for, but it's at least, it's consistent with what you've said thus far in the presentation. I mean, the very first thing that you said under current delivery model is coaching support is voluntary. And so is this going to be, and so if we've seen some of the best practices in gains in student achievement among, and I guess I want you to correct me if I'm getting this wrong, among classrooms that have been more engaged in reading recovery and kind of math recovery, and now we're going to try to broaden that to all classrooms, is that a little bit of what I'm hearing? Well, then, correct it.
No, no. What, I guess what, what we're talking about is, is the collective knowledge that we can tap into. We have teachers in this district that are capable of making the gains with the students. We have classrooms that we could point out that, that are taking that gap that you referenced, and not only closing it, but exceeding that national norm with the kids, with the high-poverty kids that we have. What we're doing with this model are putting these supports in place, and by the reduction of some salaries, to free up money for substitutes, to allow these teachers to get together and learn from one another, we can leverage that collective knowledge to make the masses better. By masses, I mean our, our classroom teachers. So we have the capacity here, we don't have the structures or the supports to allow that type of learning, that type of training, the job embedded training, that we need to make it systemic. And we could provide you with, you know, with data of some buildings that are, that are doing, making those gains.
Okay. All right. I've kept quiet so far. We're going to have a lot of questions. You answered the one about Parma and South Euclid, so we really don't have any districts that can show us that they've actually closed the gap or exceeded it locally. But I do know there's national schools that have exceeded and have high poverty and so forth. And I think maybe, you know, when we were doing the DLT and SLT, and that, that was supposed to be the way to do the work, to get that high quality and, and success. I have so many different thoughts and feelings on this, because having worked with the DLT, also doing the tutoring that I'm doing, you know, in past experience and so forth, I'm kind of like in a lot of different places. One of the things is, you're saying that it's not systemic now, because there are some teachers that don't let the coaches in their room. What makes you think that those teachers would attend the sessions and then utilize what they learn, or what was presented, in their classrooms, if at this point, they're not willing to learn from anyone?
Yeah, and we don't know. We, but right now, we're not, we don't have an opportunity to even provide them with that professional development.
They have the opportunity. Alls they have to do is say yes to the coach.
In this model, we can require them to attend professional development-
Right.
-in place of their time.
But my point is, if they're not willing to allow the coach in to help them get better results, which eventually they're going to get graded on, so you'd think they'd want to make sure they had the best results and had any help they could get, but there are some people who are resistant. Now, I don't know what the percentage is of people who are saying no to the coaches, but I do know there are teachers who are. And my point is, you can present them with all kinds of wonderful ideas, but if they're not willing to learn, which they're not showing right now that they are, I don't really know that, pulling them out of the classroom, giving them a, quote, "break from the kids", and putting them into a classroom, study themselves, is going to really make that much difference. Unless they let people in their room to, whether it's a peer, a coach, or whatever, to watch a lesson, to listen to another lesson, to find out what it is they're missing, there isn't a thing we can do to get that teacher to improve. They have to want to improve, and they have to make the effort. And every one of them has had the opportunity to do that.
The one change, as Dr. Jones said, is at least through requirement, we will be able to provide them with the tools to do that. Now, whether or not they go back into the classroom and do something with it, you're right. My suspicion is that there will be at least a percentage of that, that do. And I think an increasing percentage, based on the new teacher evaluation system that you brought up, as score, as they see other people's scores narrowing that gap, and as Ted said, in some cases, exceeding it, and theirs isn't. Ultimately, if a teacher, you're right, a teacher decides that, you know, I, you know, just sat there, got going one ear and out the other, went back to my classroom, closed the door, and I'll let anybody in there, I'd still like to think there's steps we can take with that person, but, yeah, there's not immediate improvement. You're right. But I think this takes a major step forward, at least giving all the teachers the tools that they need, for, you know, our own professionals here, and our own best practices, that we admit are making some gains, to make inroads into those deficiencies.
I'm sorry that you don't have any real good comparison of showing a group that, that exceeds, or even meets the national norms with a high-poverty area, and I hope that you would search out that information for us, so we can see what it is, besides having DLT, SLT collaboration meetings, what else is there going on that they're able to succeed, but when we follow that same program of DLT, SLT collaboration, we're not getting it. So there's got to be something going on, something different, and we need to find out what it is. A lot of this seems to be, when you're talking about meeting all the needs of all the kids in the room, that's, goes along the idea of doing some differentiated instruction. And I think there are teachers that are very well-qualified to do that. I know that not everyone can. Those are the ones that I think we need to look at and say, maybe they're not in the right area of instruction, if they can't do some differentiated instruction, especially when I know that that's been something that we've talked about, that we've had sessions on. I feel like we do the same things over and over and over again, and we're not getting the results that we're supposed to be getting. However, when I looked at the percentage of growth on those charts, there were times when we exceeded the national growth, because we start so low and we make the progress. So while the gap doesn't narrow, the percentage of growth of the students is actually higher in some cases with our students than it is with the national norm. Now, I did notice that between second and third grade, that is where we really go down the tubes, as far as that increase in growth and so forth. What I, what I noticed was, our, the rate where we're having a problem is, over the summer, we're not keeping that, that level that we have drops more than what maybe the national norm does. So we keep starting out low, and we're not able to maintain that over the summer. And so whether that means some kind of an adjustment in a summer school program, or in some kind of instruction or work with kids over the summer, because that seems to be where they're losing a lot. When you say that we start at, you know, we get to 50, oh, I gotta make sure I get the right years. That one's not a good one. We end the year at 91, and then we start the next year, and we're only at 66. That's a significant drop.
If I may, there's, each year is a different assessment, so we can't look at that end-of-the-year number and compare it to the beginning of the next year at a different grade level. Each year has its own assessment.
Well, I understand that. But when you're looking against the national norms-
Right. There's still a gap. You're right.
Right. That's what I guess I'm looking at, too, though, is how much did the national norm drop down versus how much did we drop down? And that's where I was getting that, most of the time, we're fairly close, but between second and third grade, we go down significantly. So that's, you know, a concern there. Do we have data that shows that reading recovery is not working?
No, no. Reading recovery is, is a, it works. It works. But again, it's for a specific targeted population of students, first grade, and we have more kids that need intervention than we can provide intervention for. Reading recovery, when we looked at and sampled, that's, we asked our state support team to sample all first-string districts, and they reported to us that there is not one first-string district using reading recovery because of that, that it cannot, it's not a sustainable program to meet the number of students that, that a district with, with high poverty needs to address. We're looking at a much larger population of students with need. That's why when you look at the number of individuals, Mrs. Van Ho, that we have to provide intervention, we drastically increase that to tackle the number of students that we need to. To answer your question, reading recovery is, you know, it does show that it makes a difference, but it's, it's for a limited number of students.
This might be a question for-
I, I just have one quick-
Okay, go ahead.
Because that was a great, that's a great question. So what you're saying then, it, so we had, what, about, you said 40 kids in reading recovery? About 40 children?
No, no. Eight each.
Eight.
Thirty-two kids. Thirty-two or-
Thirty-two?
Thirty-five, thirty-six.
Okay, thirty-two kids.
So, yeah, what's important is just that a reading recovery teacher services over the course of the year, she can reach up to 32 students.
Okay.
Between teaching small group, and in this district, we've chosen LLI, another comprehensive intervention, plus her eight reading recovered. So depending on how many kids go in and out of LLI, that's where it varies, but in most cases, it's at least a classroom.
I think she was strictly referring to reading recovery. Right, so the number's eight, right? Eight per teacher?
Eight, four and a half teachers.
Eight per teacher, so times four and a half, but then, okay.
Okay, so, okay, so how do you identify a child who needs reading recovery?
Well, currently, we are using AIMS Web, the Info Benchmarking System.
Okay.
And we select all those children that are 1.5 standard deviation, the lowest children in first grade. We also get teacher input, as well as we use CLAeS Optimization Survey of early literacy measures, which was actually just deemed highly reliable and valid by the National Council, RTI. So we just receive information on that. So we use a mixture of CDMs, as well as a more diagnostic, to identify children who are significantly below their peers across six literacy measures.
I guess my only concern would be that those children who are significantly lower than their peers are, I want to make sure that they're not, that they're getting the services they need from their classroom teacher if they're not going to have a reading recovery teacher.
Yeah, that's, Mrs. Lysy, it's a great question. And one component that we haven't talked really at all about today, aside from in passing here, is that second-to-last bullet, the response to intervention model. That is a model that we're putting in place, the RTI model within the district for implementation next year, that really has, and I think it's been extremely collaborative in nature, in building this, this model of what interventions do we have for kids in the district? And how do we go about ensuring that every kid who, or every child who has a deficit of some kind, in not only reading, but in mathematics and behavior as well? So all three of those critical components, how do we go about supporting them initially in the classroom as a tier-one intervention, and then with what type of additional supports in tier-two, and then more focused, really intense interventions in a tier-three? So we're really working hard just to streamline those three things through that RTI model. So I can assure you that the components and the procedures for getting there will be in place.
Okay, because that's, that was my, I know that was Mrs. Van Ho's concern, and that certainly would be mine, too.
Okay, question, and this probably will have to go to Mr. Hanicek. You said that the AIMS Web data that you're showing here on the graphs was for oral reading fluency. Okay. Does, do these numbers carry over to comprehension and vocabulary? Are they similar graphs?
When we look at the assessing comprehension using curriculum-based measurement, we start doing that in fourth and fifth grade, and we use that in the middle school. Typically, when students have difficulty with oral reading fluency, they also have difficulty with comprehension. It's not always the case, but it's strongly linked, yes.
Okay. One of the things that I picked up with this latest tutoring that I'm doing at UPSN, where we're working with the different sounds, but we're also working with pictures, to have the kids identify pictures that they are likely to see on these standardized tests. Done in black and white, so it's real, I mean, it's very much- Done in black and white, so it's real, I mean, it's very much like print. And now, I'm working with kindergartners, not first graders, okay? It is amazing to me, the pictures that they cannot identify, which is a vocabulary issue more than anything else. And, you know, if they can't identify a gate, or they can't identify, I'm trying to think of some of the other ones that they couldn't identify, but, you know, a pie, you know, things like that. It doesn't matter what you're going to do unless we do some focus on vocabulary building with them to get them to understand, we know that the issue is the amount of words they know before they go into kindergarten. My concern is that, you know, we talk about all this stuff, but we need to help actually kindergarten and preschool, which I realize is not included in the Title I. But I hope we can find some way to do that because, you know, I really think that vocabulary is probably one of the fastest ways for us to make gains at the lower levels. Because like I said, every day, there are, I tutor three individually, and, you know, sometimes they all miss the same one, a gate. That was another one that was hard for them, they couldn't figure out what a gate was. We all think it's something, it's very common, well, why wouldn't you know what a gate is? They don't have experience with a gate, you know, or the difference between a sailboat and a tugboat, but yet they're expected to know it. So, I really think that's one of the ways that I can see these kids are improving because once they get, they're told what it is, and we repeat it two and three and four and five times, they eventually know what they are. And until all kids can get that kind of help, they're lower level readers or lower, socio-economically lower, when they can get that help to get vocabulary, then I think we're going to see some changes too in the gains. I am concerned that, you know, similar to the state where they keep changing how they want things tested and everything else, and they keep wanting to make it tougher, I understand all that, and I understand our need for doing well on those state tests. I am fully supportive in that, that respect. But I also think sometimes we try stuff, and then we don't quite get it implemented, and then we don't do it enough, and then evaluate it after we've done it to see if any of that worked. We just say, oh, we're not getting the gains enough, so let's find a new program. Oh, we're not getting gains enough, so let's find a new one. We just started with Reading Street, and that's a program that's supposed to be helping us a lot with this reading problem that we're trying to deal with.
Yeah.
And I just, I guess that's my concern, is that, you know, you keep throwing stuff at, you're not going to know which thing really works at the end. I mean, you can say, oh, all of it does, but maybe all of it would have worked without a particular component, or maybe it won't work without a particular component in it. And so, that's a concern, because the one thing we can't afford to do is take steps backward.
If I may, I, one of the things I find really exciting about this proposal is, from a measurement perspective, it's much easier to measure the effect of systemic change, I mean, systemic support structure, to look at its effect is much, it's much more sound than to have here or there in piecing. So, yeah, and that's part of looking at progress and looking at, well, how much is this having an effect? And it's much easier measured when you've got the system all headed in the same direction, and you're providing that type of approach.
Okay, let me, you know, I still go back to, if people don't want to make a change, they're not going to, and that's no matter what you're going to do. On the support dollars and so forth, is that all federal funds and no special, no general funds in it?
No general funds.
Okay. And on the tutors, would they be paid on the teacher's salary schedule?
No, there's a...
No.
Okay, you said they're paid on an hourly rate, didn't you?
That's right, yes.
So, some teachers would end up taking pay cuts?
If they're laid off, yes, they would take pay cuts. If they're laid off teachers going into these tutoring jobs, it is less.
Well, here's a question then. If these people are currently coaches, and you're going to lay them off, aren't they coaches because...
No, they're going to go back and... No, the coaches won't be laid off. They have enough seniority to bump back into classrooms.
Okay, okay. I was going to say, because it didn't make sense that you would lose...
It's your first, second year teachers, like anything else, how it falls in line. Those teachers would be laid off.
I still don't... Hopefully, they would be one of the better reading teachers because they would, just came out of school, but I know that's not necessarily so. All right.
Can I just ask a quick question about the collaboration piece and the professional development? So, you'll be doing perhaps like a first grade professional development, and it will be every first grade teacher in the district that would be together participating?
Yes, yes, the intent is, it would be grade level specific, but so that we're not pulling every single first grade teacher out of the district on the same day. We would divide each grade level into two cohorts, and let those teachers, if we, for instance, if we do a three-day professional development model spread out over the course of a semester, those eight teachers would be together, working together on those three days, the same eight teachers, so that they can leverage that collective knowledge that they have, and work together for those three days. And then the second cohort, you know, would come in the afternoons. We really best utilize the dollars that we're taking to pay for subs. Instead of getting a difficult-to-find half-day sub, you know, we would get one sub for the entire day, and we'd cover half of a first grade class in the morning, the other half in the afternoon.
And what about these highly successful teachers with respect to collaboration? Will everyone have an opportunity to collaborate with best practices? I mean, we're talking about teachers that can, you know, effectively decrease the gap. How is, how are we going to share their, their knowledge and expertise?
It's actually one of the, it's one of the standards, the state has operating standards for professional development, and one of them is, the professional development should be collaborative in nature. So, shouldn't, try to avoid these kind of, you know, one-on-one professional development, or the other end of the spectrum, a large group, a sit-and-get with, you know, 40 teachers. You want the, you want it to be collaborative, not an expert model standing up and spewing all of the best practices. You want teachers participating in that and sharing, and that's what we're really trying to leverage. We've actually been working on this with mathematics from January until now with our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers, and they're really reporting some great, they see a lot of value in coming out and being part of the process, and bouncing ideas back and forth, and creating, you know, these new academic content standards, the scope and sequence, doing some fantastic work. We're really reaping the benefits of collective knowledge. Is the best way I can, can put it.
Is there a potential for a grade level to have, to not have teachers that are doing best practices, to not, in other words, have, you know, in this one grade level that all the, that none of the teachers are really that person that exceeds the national norms? And then what do you do with the group?
Oh, we hope that. We hope we don't have that.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I don't know.
I think if that happens, Mrs. Van Ho, it's just like any teacher that's in our district right now would respond to getting a class list of students who are, who are all very low achieving students. You alter your instruction to best meet the needs of those, those students, and we would do the same for our teachers, and really provide, you know, if that means bringing in, you know, some, someone who may have taught that grade level before, maybe one of our coaches that's leading the professional development can, you know, insert themselves into that. We want to leverage every resource we have to make sure that we have the best teachers in the classroom. And if we have that situation, you know, we feel that we can be creative in putting supports together to address that. We hope that we don't have that.
Well, I would hope we don't either, but, you know, law of averages, I guess. My biggest concern goes back to the people who don't want to change, you know, and that's going to hurt us no matter what, what we do. When you talked about the 70-30 model for the, the coaches, is the transition year still a 70-30, or is it just one coach per building, and they're not going to have the time here?
No, that, that first year is probably going to be heavier towards the classroom. It'll probably be more of like an 80-20, because we really feel that we need to build that capacity before we relinquish the responsibility of the following year. So, there would be, during that transition year, that's the intent, is to have more, more supportive building.
We have to be in the building, in transition.
Work that's used a lot, doesn't it? On the tutors, you said that those, those don't meet one-on-one, they meet small groups?
Small groups.
By definition, your small group is how many?
It depends on the intervention. That's part of the RTI, will spell out how many students will be seen in each intervention. LLI right now is three.
Going back to working in a volunteer way, there have been classes where almost the whole class needs that intervention. And, you know, that's, I understand the classroom teacher has, you know, X amount of time with them, and then she has to teach something else, where they might need to be more dedicated to that reading learning first. And that's always been a concern of mine, that they really need the reading to succeed, which we know they do in every subject. And they are that behind, that they need to have reading as, you know, their primary focus, and science and social studies will come along later and that, but I want to make sure that they really get that reading opportunity. I do think that we're missing a big component if we don't do something with preschool and kindergarten. I think that that's going to be the key for us to have any chance of success. Now, the only concern I have is our transientness, because I think that does play into, when we try to gauge our numbers, and we have X number of kids in our, in first grade, and then how many of those are really the same kids we're testing when they're leaving fifth grade? And if there's too high of a, a new number there, then your work that you did originally in first and second grade may not be with those students, and that's why we're not seeing that growth, and that's something that we need to identify as well. And say, okay, the kids that we have, and we're doing these interventions with already, and they stay with us, are they succeeding? And I don't think we have that information at this point, do we?
No, we do not have it tonight. Well, what we do know is, we do keep track of our transient, our transciency rates, and first and second grade are among our highest transient grade levels. I think that further supports, you know, investing the substantial dollar amounts in a program like reading recovery into a grade level, one, that's, that has one of, it's among your highest transient rate grade levels for kiddos in the district. So, you really want to, when you have, like you were saying, Mrs. Van Ho, so many kids with a need, you know, how can we make sure that we're servicing all of them? Because when they are here with us, you know, we are servicing it, we're doing our best to do that, and be fiscally responsible at the same time with all of our grant funds.
Because if we don't know the information of whether the students who participate in our interventions now sustain that after they're released from the intervention, we don't know if that intervention works. And the same thing with this program, we won't know if that works, because it's not the same group of kids that you're doing first and second grade with, that you're trying to say at the end, we haven't changed the gap, we haven't narrowed the gap, or it's widened.
Point.
Because you don't have the same kids.
One of the issues is where this is a huge effort to try to, to shore up and improve core instruction.
That's a, that's a better answer, Dr. James.
And this, because you're right, this, we, we want to address all needs, but we have a huge need in the core instructional side, and that's what the professional development is aimed at.
That's a much better answer, because by saying that we're changing Title I because we're not closing the gap, and then we're going to start a new program, and we're still not going to close the gap, and then we're going to start a new program. We're starting this program because the teachers didn't close the gap, we're going to start, I think that's a better answer.
That's the purpose.
That's the purpose. That was the point I was trying to make. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lysick, just one last question. You said that we're, when are we implementing Title I programming into the middle schools? Would that be this upcoming school year?
Upcoming school year.
Do we have programs in place? I mean, we have something to get started over there? Because I know you were saying something about their structure's a little different because they have teams, and so we've had, have you had a chance to chat with the folks over there at Central and Forest Park to start implementing some programs?
We're working with them right now, and actually have visits lined up to look at some programs with the principals and members of the, the reading subcommittee.
Excellent, okay. Thank you.
Do we have any cohort groups that we could, in other school districts that have middle school programming, that would have a comparable poverty level that maybe they can help us with too?
For middle school programming?
Yeah.
That's actually, one of the districts we're going to visit is Garfield Heights, which is very similar.
And they've closed the gap, and they've closed the gap.
Well, they're working on, we haven't looked at their data yet.
See, that's, that's the thing, is you say, if you're going to go see Garfield Heights, but if you don't know that they're closing the gap, then that's really not going to help you. Because it doesn't matter what they're doing. We need to find the places that are actually closing the gap and find out what they're doing, not what another district around here is trying to do, but they're, we don't know if they're successful or not. That doesn't make sense, you know? That's just looking for the grass that's green around the other side of the fence, but it may not really be. Mrs. DeAngeles?
Okay, one of the things I'm concerned with, when you're doing this professional development, and you're pulling out, there's four first grade teachers in each of the buildings. You're going to pull out half of them and put them into, and these kids, those days, the children are with subs because the teacher's being trained. But in the meantime, the teacher could be out for illness, could be out for other things. Every time a teacher's out of the classroom, this child, it's a different, it's a free-for-all day. It's not as productive of a day as if you and your classroom teacher is there. Because I know, I used to, when we had a sub, that was party day, you know, it was a fun day or whatever. So, I see, I don't know, are they getting that kind of professional development now with the current program? Are they being pulled out, or is that...
Our feeling, I'll speak for myself, I think it's our feeling is, you're right, when a teacher's not in the classroom, they're not with the kids for that half a day, or that day, whatever it is. So, you have to weigh the professional development that they're getting, is it worth them missing the day because of the advantages that that gives them in their toolbox of how they go back to their classroom for the rest of the year?
If they use what they learned in that toolbox, if we came back and said, some of it's not being used, I mean, I get, granted, we can't make them use it. You can feed them, you can take them to water, but you can't...
No, but you can increase the likelihood that they will. You know, I think our teachers are dedicated, they are, they want achievement for their children, and for whatever reason, the voluntary model for, and it's not because they're not good teachers necessarily, it's because they aren't comfortable with someone in their room, let's say. But the intent, I think, of all of our staff is to improve instruction for all students. And I think that's a given that we have to move forward with, the faith that that's what they will want.
Faith's a good word. And that's the assumption I'm making, is that most of the teachers that receive this training will go back and try to implement it. All, you never make that guarantee, all.
Or some degree of what they've learned.
Right. You know, I would like to, you know, I would like to think that the vast majority of our teachers are professional enough and have the kids' needs in line enough that that's going to happen.
The other thing I'm kind of concerned with is we have so many changes happening in the district this year. There's a lot. And a lot of the students who are in our schools, also in their personal lives, have a lot of changes. Where, you know, who's living at their house, where are they living? I just keep thinking, we're just, it's one more thing, we're uprooting them, or, you know, shaking their little, you know, comfort zone of their world. And it's, you know, I just don't know if this would be the right year to do it, because we've already changed in their building. In some cases, some of these kids, this was their only stability, and now we've rocked that. And that's what I'm just concerned with.
Well, there will be a lot of changes already, I think, as you just said. Our staffs are already shaken up, you know, based on the bidding process, so there will be a lot of changes already. I'm not so sure that they would have the same teachers anyway, you know, depending on where they, where they land. I don't, you know, it's hard to say that they would have familiar faces, they'll have some familiar faces, of course.
Right.
All of which they're accustomed to working with.
I was just thinking, like, say, a childhood at Memorial Park School, now it's going to be switched over to Shoreview by where the boundary lines are. And if he's a second grader going to third grade, for three years now, he's had three different principals. You know, just different people in their lives, just changing so much. Now, they're going to another building, now maybe he's taking a bus, he's not, before he was, you know, getting dropped off by mom at school, and maybe that one constant was that teacher he went to for tutoring for reading. And that, you know, maybe he's not going to be there, maybe he is going to be there, but that program that he was part of, and are used to going. I just keep thinking, just one more change in that child's life, I just didn't know how that would affect them.
Well, it does... Well, it does bring up, I was concerned and did mention that to Dr. Jones, not so much from the kids' viewpoint, but just simply, and I mentioned this, I think, before when we had the first non-meeting meeting.
Right.
Non-presentation. And that was just that with this year, when the principals are going to have to go through a lot of changes and they're going to have a lot on their plate, that was one of my concerns, that they have to then absorb an additional responsibility with this, because...
They'll also have the, the resource of assistant principals in all of the buildings, which will be immense.
Oh, I hope so, because they, I mean, there will be, there'll be the breakdowns of, or things aren't working, or the custodian doesn't remember how to change something. There's a lot of new technology.
Yes.
That everybody is going to be learning next year, and we have to hope that everything works as it's supposed to.
Yes.
But we know with new construction, that's not necessarily so. So they're going to be kind of busy with a lot of issues.
Right. No, no question about that. But they'll be, they'll be busy regardless, you know, whether or not we make this change. They'll be busy.
Right. But then another change just makes it that much more to learn and to do and so forth. Okay. Are there any other questions from the board?
Just one more question. You brought up a really good point, Mrs. Van Ho, about summer school. Dr. Jones, can any Title I funds be used for summer?
I, I wrote myself a little note to follow up on this.
No?
And the supplementary educational service money that we don't expend be used for summer school. And I look at Birdie, just, I don't know if she knows even, but, because we, we don't expend all of our set aside money on SES in any year. And I'm wondering if that money can be redirected to summer school services for this...
It's a possibility, and the answer is it'll depend on how that waiver is awarded. Because they were trying to redesign the SES program. The last word we had the other day, I think, was that each district could identify those SES services they want to provide. We would only identify, we'll say, 10. I'm wondering if we could identify nine and have the 10 be our own district and provide summer school services. But it's depending on the SES waiver from the federal level that we're waiting to hear.
What Ms., what Ms. Miller's referring to is the waiver that was proposed by the Ohio Department of Education for the educational, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act that they have provided, that I've been sort of giving you some early read-in on. We don't know what the outcome of that waiver will be, and we anticipate knowing by sometime in April. But that's going to be late for some of this planning. However, we will continue to pursue the thought of dedicating supplementary educational service dollars that we don't expend in a set aside toward summer school for the neediest children. Because we haven't had...
Because we're going to have a long summer this year.
That's exactly.
I'm thinking it's a long one.
We do have available $13,000. And through Title, right, Mrs. Miller, what was the 13,000 for, from, again?
Luckily.
Yeah. Well, we're going to use that money. I've talked with Debbie Barberio. And because it's such a small amount of money, what we're going to do is provide tutoring. We'll offer it to our teachers to go into the CDC and to provide tutoring for her summer camp, so that, that will be good. So we'll be able to service a number of kids that way with that amount of money. And we'll look at, we were looking at even the preschool, the younger, younger students, younger kids going into school, so we can give them a head start.
That's a good idea.
So it'll be an easy way to, to offer the program on site, which is already in, in progress.
How many kids do we service in the summer there, do you know? About?
I don't know why 80 sticks in my head, but I'm a little over 80, actually. Is it about 100?
Mm-hmm.
80 to 100? Yeah.
Not enough that need the help, but at least it's a start to figure. Mr. Smith, you had another question?
Uh, not a question. I guess a statement at the end of this. Today is Monday, March 26, 2012. And for the benefit of those watching at home, I'd like to remind everybody that 15 years ago on Saturday, the first Derolf decision came down. On March 24th, 1997, Justice Francis Sweeney, when writing for the majority, said, "By our decision today, 15 years ago, we send a clear message to lawmakers. The time has come to fix the system," meaning the pub, the system of funding public education in Ohio. "Let there be no misunderstanding. Ohio's public school financing scheme must undergo a complete systemic overhaul." Words written 15 years and two days ago that have not been heeded. I can support this programming shift. I think some of what you're hearing tonight is the board's concern with moving away from a reading recovery model that clearly worked. But we have to reach more kids with less money, and we have to do, and, and we have tougher standards coming towards this district by 2014. And I think that's our concern. And I'm trying to figure out whether or not we're, you know, again, kind of making a choice between good and better options, or worse and not-so-bad options. And I can't figure out which one this happens to be. But yeah, for the benefit of those at home, this board continues and this administration continues, and with the support of our labor, with the cooperation of our labor and bargaining units, this district continues to try to stretch dollars as effectively as it can while dealing with a student population that is extraordinarily challenged. And there are real heroes in our buildings doing great work every day. And so I can support this shift because, again, I think we have to reach more kids with less money and do, and try to hit tougher standards. And so I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate, you know, you opening yourselves up to every question the board had, but I think, you know, again, 15 years ago, they called for change and nothing happened.
And if you remember, I found an article that was dated in the late 60s, where the people, when they first decided to start funding, or sending funds to parochial schools, that the public education system at that time said, "But you haven't fixed our funding yet for public schools." So this is an issue that hasn't been done for a long, a lot longer than I thought. But it's been a really long time. Any other questions or comments? I want to thank you. I mean, I know that we asked some tough questions. You showed a little bit of courage. You know, and, and I hope you didn't get too hot under the collar, but I appreciate the fact that you're looking for something that works. Obviously, I've expressed my concerns about constantly changing and never knowing what does work. My, I think my biggest concern is really still with those people reluctant to change. And I'm not sure that they're going to, just because we provide something a different way. No, I'm not going to go there. I just think that we, you know, we do a good job. We see the growth over the course of a year. We know that our kids are doing better than what they would have otherwise. We just have to find some ways that are really going to do it. And I hope you're making the right decision, because if we go backwards, I'm not going to be a very happy person.
Very.
Yeah, but I don't have to get hot under the collar as much. I mean, we hear from the public. We do all the time. And that's something that I hope is communicated to the, to the staff and so forth, is that people keep saying, "Why are we so low?" And we can give them all the things about, "Well, we have a poor student population," and that. They don't want to hear those answers, because to them, those are excuses. The, the thing is, we pay people to do a job, and we want them to do it. And we know that some things are just, take a lot longer to do, and we have to work a little bit harder. And so I appreciate the fact that you're open to new ideas and so forth. But I really do want you to go find those districts that have high poverty and can succeed. Because I think that's where we need to find our information of what works. Because originally, we were told the DLT, SLT, and collaboration was going to be the way to go. Then why aren't we seeing the success? Why isn't it working? And is, does it go back to those reluctant teachers who don't participate in collaboration?
I think part of it is, Ms. Van Ho, that collaboration takes a lot of practice, a lot of dedication, a lot of time. The teacher-based team model is relatively new, and I think that teachers are trying hard at it. And I think that they just need, we all need, just to be a little bit better at it, bringing the data, understanding how the data impacts or informs instruction. And it's, it is asking people to work in different ways. And so I, I would not want to say we're giving up on the DLT, SLT, TBT process. So I, I just would propose that, that I think we're still doing that. That's, this does not change that. Because we, we have confidence that sharing things professionally is, is the way we get better and improve.
Well, it sounds like this is more of that sharing and to get better.
And this is highly endorsed by the state's support team, which also is not moving away from the DLT and everything else, all the training that we have at the level.
Well, I did see in today's paper, an article that our, your governor, education governor, mentioned that he was tired of seeing kids graduating from high school and still not, still needing remedial coursework at the college level. And that our diplomas aren't worth anything. I think part of the problem is there's a mental shift that needs to be made amongst the general population, that school matters, and they better learn to make their kids take it seriously at the beginning. Because the material's certainly provided there for them, and we know we provide the extra support, but if it's not taken seriously, then they, they're the ones that need the remedial work at the end. I thought one of the best ways that they could have done it would have been just to simply say, "Okay, you need remedial work. You can't come to college yet. You will go to the community college, you'll go back to your district or whatever and get your help. But you don't even start college if you still need remedial classwork."
There are some conversations about that at the IR level. And I just want to point out, in a matter of reflection on what you just said, that many of those students who graduate and they're unable to hack college work were those who needed extreme attention, preschool, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, which is what we're trying to do with this model. Right.
Yeah. I just read that the University of Akron is, is doing that. They're going to be steering kids to the community colleges and then providing them after associate's degree to come back and finish.
There's a lot of...
So it's out there.
There's a lot of high-level conversation.
Yeah.
Then they're going to have to make sure that they collaborate between the community colleges and the state schools or, or other colleges to make sure that they're doing equal rigor. You know, it's just a lot of changes, and I, we know that. Everybody just wants the kids to do better. But we just need to get the parents, I think, involved and to make them understand how important this is. The kindergarten is not kindergarten like we used to have. I think that's one of the biggest misconceptions when I tell people that there's not nap time anymore, and they don't play in the little corner with the dishes and building blocks anymore. They're shocked. They don't, it was like, "What do you mean, you don't?" No, they're sitting in class, and they're learning, and they're learning to read, and they're, you know, doing some simple math. And so our public doesn't understand what we're expecting the kids to come with to start kindergarten and what it takes to sustain achievement through the years. And that's our job, to make sure that they learn that. Okay, we aren't taking any action tonight. This was purely a presentation. So we thank you for that. I know you're going to be getting back to us. I'm sure we'll probably have more questions the next time. If there is no other, any other items to come before the board?
I did leave at the board table tonight a confidential memo on an entirely different matter that I would like you to read. It might have gotten mixed in with a lot of papers.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this point, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Suter, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysick.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Suter.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
We're in period five zero.
Thank you. We are dismissed.